Here.
Commissioner Hudes?
Here.
Commissioner Hansen?
Here.
Commissioner Janoff?
Here.
Vice Chair Kane?
Here.
And Chair O'Donnell?
Here. And should we just state for the record that Commissioner Birch cannot sit because of her proximity to the site? Okay. All right, Michael Kean is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, everybody always tells you to turn off your cell phones and everything. I've been skipping that because I assume you'll do that. We, tonight, we're only handling one thing, and that's the North Forty. We have no, I don't believe we have any subcommittee reports since we were here yesterday on a regular meeting, and only 24 hours difference. So the first thing I will ask, and there are no minutes, as some of you understand, we can have general comments for up to three minutes a person on matters not on the agenda. I don't have any cards for that kind of thing, at least I don't think I do. I have cards for the main subject, but if anyone wants to speak on another matter, now is the time to do it. All right, seeing no one, we will move to the, first I'll invite public comment on the matter for this evening, and that is, that is the North Forty. I have some cards here of people who have signed and asked to speak. If anyone else would like to speak, I would invite you to take a card in the seats, behind the seats, and submit them up here. First card will be Charles Erickson.
So, Charles Erickson, 967 Cherrystone, Los Catos, California. So I have four issues to talk to the Commission about related to the North Forty. The first is the concept of economic vitality versus community vitality, and how that might, the difference between those two concepts from my perspective, and how that might relate to considerations about commercial development. The second is grade, height, and open space. The third is proposed changes to the allowable square footage of hotels. And the fourth is community room. Because there's 2 minutes and 22 seconds left, I'm going to take those in reverse order because I, my guess is I won't go back through all of them. The first is about community space. Presently, all of the, generally all of the service clubs in the community, which provide great service to the community and help make Los Catos largely play a large role in what they are, meet at the Los Catos Lodge, both Rotary Clubs, the Quodis Club, the Lions Club, and including the Daughters of the American Revolution. As, that property has been the interest, there's been substantial interest in that property to be redeveloped. It's been an affordable housing overlay zone, so it's only a matter of time before the present Los Catos Lodge is not there anymore. In anticipation of that, one will need to find a new location for those service clubs to meet on their, on a regular basis. And there frankly is not, as the service clubs have investigated, that there's no location in town that will accommodate that, where there is parking available or that has the capacity. So I would like for the town, the Planning Commission, and the Council to consider explicitly putting a community room space into the allowable spaces in, that are permitted in there, and encourage both the Planning Commission and the Council to think about that as something that they would work with developers on who might develop the property. As an example, if you, if you were to review the application which has been filed and is a subject of current litigation between the town and those developers, there was such a space in that proposal that in fact is larger than the present space used by those service clubs, so would have, have performed that function for the town. So there's an example for you to think about. I've got 12 seconds left, so I will leave the other three issues aside. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Yes, Commissioner Badami?
I have a question for Mr. Erickson. Can you just elaborate just a little bit on the number two, and number three, and number four for us, that you didn't get to?
Okay. I'll, I'll try to do it briefly. So, in the staff's report, in the allowable use table, that's what I refer to, is there, it changes the allowable square footage for quote hotel office space from 250,000 square feet, and says, and limits office space to 150,000 square feet, and limits hotels to 150,000 square feet. I think that it's real important for the town to examine, to think carefully about what type of hotel that they would like to have on that space. If it's a full-service hotel, it probably will not fit in 150,000 square feet, given my research. Not saying, but if, so it's a full-service hotel, it won't fit in 150. It's probably going to have to be 200, 250,000 square feet. If it's a small boutique hotel, it probably will fit in that. In addition, so that's a, so it's a concern, so while one split those two, split it into two halves, effectively reduced the square footage that one could build a hotel in from 250 to 150. I'm not sure what the purpose of splitting that was, unless it was to intentionally limit the type of hotel. Related to that, the Council, when it looked for other sources of revenue, it put a measure in front of the people that passed with 83 percent favorable vote, which would increase the hotel tax. So it seems like to me the town's interest is served by being sure they put a hotel and can appropriately incentivize a hotel to be built in town, and that's the most obvious space for it to do. So to limit somewhat arbitrarily, without careful thought, the square footage of a hotel works against, which I believe was major T, anyway. So that's, that's one. The second is grade, height, and open space. There's a suggestion in the staff report that one could increase height if one would increase open space, which is not an unusual kind of concept to put in a planning document. I think that's absolutely the wrong approach in this case. Here's why. It's, there, that, the open space requirements in the North Forty specific plan are much more, are much more generous, or larger, or higher expectation, whatever the right language is, than is typical in town, typical in most towns, and, and is much more generous than any other location in this town. So there's no need to, to have more open space. And so height should be limited to be sure that one is addressing the look and feel, but height shouldn't be arbitrarily limited when it works against what one wants to accomplish on the site. So height should be related, the height limitation should be related to the uses that one wants to permit there, and in fact wants to incentivize there. So if you go back to the hotel thing, if you limit the height of a hotel, let's say that you change the square footage to 200, 250,000 for a hotel, and you wanted a full-service hotel, you're probably not going to be able to build a full-service hotel with the height limitation presently in the North Forty. That's just a design issue for them. So one needs to think about, what does one want to put there, what height does it require? And don't, don't trade something for that, just whatever the height needs to be for what you want there, just let that be the height, but don't trade open space for height because keep the height down as much as you can, except where you need for it to be up. So that's the second one. And a part, a subpart of that is typically the town measures height from existing grade. I think in this case, one shouldn't do it from finished grade. Because of the gradation of that property, it varies a lot, and its grade is related to an historical agricultural use, which really has nothing to do with the future use. They're going to have to put in all kinds of infrastructure and all kinds of things. Okay? So that's the other thing. I'll leave the economic vitality versus community vitality concept aside for the moment. I'll, I'm likely to talk about that on the 31st to the Council. Economic vitality, in my opinion, is much too limiting a concept, but community vitality, economic vitality becomes a subset of community vitality, but anyway.
I think there might have been another question. Vice Chair Kane, did you have a question?
No, that was my exact question. Would he elaborate?
Any other questions? Thank you very much. The second card I have, and again, my reading may not be accurate, it looks like Jody Houston? Jolie? Jolie.
Hi, I am here, I'm an attorney with Berliner Cohen, and our firm represents Grosvenor, Summerhill, and Eden Housing, so I'm speaking on their behalf. We have reasons why we believe that this revision to the specific plan-
Let me stop you for a moment. At the moment, we're not talking, this, well, let me get that right. Okay, go right ahead, it's my fault.
We believe that it's premature to be revising the specific plan right now. One, there's a lawsuit pending, and with the trial scheduled at the end of the March, at the end of March. If a judgment in favor of the plaintiffs, our project would be built under the existing specific plan. So any changes would be invalid, as they would not apply to half of the land area. In addition, so the specific plan as amended would no longer be consistent, a consistent planning document, and would need to be revised yet again. Also, we don't know what, what's feasible in the revisions, since we haven't seen a complete recommendation. Last comment, SEQA. We can't assume that there are no SEQA impacts, since development would be redistributed over the site. I'm here to answer questions.
Thank you. Other questions? Yes, Commissioner Hudes?
I wonder if you could be specific about that last statement? I, my understanding is that the SEQA was prepared on maximums over the entire 40 acres, was not prepared for, on a project basis.
Well, it would, the, the SEQA document would still have to be reviewed to see if the new revisions would be in line with what the SEQA document approved. And changing residential housing units, changing density can affect traffic, parking, noise, and it would still need to be reviewed, and-
So you're not saying it would need to be revised necessarily, it would need to be reviewed, is what you're saying?
It needs to be reviewed, and possibly revised, depending on what the, the review would need, and that's, that's it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. The third card I have is Paul Grams.
Hello. Hey, thank you for allowing me to speak today. I just had some comments about the North Forty here, about the traffic impacts, and I think that the developer's going to be making, you know, tens of millions of dollars, and it seems that he should be able to put some, some mitigations in to reduce the traffic impact. And I just went down, and I sent this as an email before, but maybe it was missed or something. Anyway, a few things that the developer can do is basically increase the Lark Highway 17 on-ramp going north to three lanes, and if he sets aside 12 feet of land to do this, that would reduce the cost of that significantly. Also, I think that Lark should be increased an additional one or two lanes from Las Catos Boulevard to 17, and the developer will have to provide like 12 to 24 feet of land, and maybe purchase 12 feet from the 17, from the 76 gas station, and that would alleviate traffic also. And then increase Las Catos Boulevard from four lanes to six lanes, from Lark Avenue to Samaritan Drive, and the developer can assist with funding to purchase the 25 feet of land from the remaining 12 lots that are not already set back. Most of the lots have already been set back, but there are 12 remaining that have not, and that would increase the lanes from four to six. Also, he could maybe assist with funding to increase to 17 overpass with an additional one or two lanes. Another interesting concept is to add a street throughout the center of the, of the development from South Burton Road to Lark Avenue, and that would reduce traffic on Las Catos Boulevard also, just have another highway going from Burton to Lark. A more interesting concept would be to possibly do some other expansions of highways also. Also, I had kind of a concern about, and this was addressed before I mentioned, about buying the land. Of course, it's worth, well supposedly, $4 million an acre, and that works out to $176 million. That's an awful lot of money. But I think that's somewhat high, because that works out to almost $100 a square foot, and this is not Tokyo. Most view properties, undeveloped land in Los Catos usually go for half that, or even a quarter of that. So anyway, if we did, let's say, buy the land for $176 million, you could, I buy tax-free bonds quite a bit, that can be used as collateral for a tax-free bond. Right now, the rate on the 20-year tax-free bond is about 2 percent, or actually 1.5 percent, and that would cost us like $2.5 million a year. You know, that sounds like a lot of money, but you have that for collateral, and you can refinance it after the 20 years are over.
Thank you. Let's see if there are any questions. Oh, we are some questions. Commissioner Hudes?
With regard to the traffic suggestions, I didn't fully understand your first one. I wonder if you could, the first suggestion, I wonder if you could repeat that?
Yeah, so that was, basically, right now, we have a lot more traffic in on the Highway 17, so right now, we only have two lanes going onto 17. If that was in, if that was increased to three lanes, the developer would have to provide an additional 12 feet of land. So that should be set aside now for that future expansion.
If I may, just, 17 north?
Yes, yes, 17 north.
Right.
Because it backs up quite a bit there, and an additional lane would greatly, would greatly alleviate that track, would greatly alleviate that backup.
Thank you.
Yes. Commissioner Hansen?
Thank you. So thank you for your comments. I, as you probably may know, we're considering amendments to the specific plan tonight on the agenda, and so I, I appreciate your comments. I wondered if, if you were recommending that we made those suggestions of yours part of the specific plan, or are you just hoping that at whatever point that the land gets developed, because the specific plan doesn't pertain to a specific proposal, it's just a plan for the land, how are you hoping to see this happen?
Well, what I was hoping is that, for example, for the increase of, let's say, lanes on Las Catos Boulevard, the developer can set aside some land for that to increase the number of lanes from four to six, and maybe possibly assist with the purchase of that 25 feet of land from those 11 remaining lots that are not already set back. So, so, so this would allow in the future, or concurrently, the expansion of Las Catos Boulevard from four to six lanes.
Okay. So, just to recap, what you're saying is, when there is a development proposal, you would hope that the developer, we could, you know, arrange that the developer would make those contributions?
Yes, yes. After all, and this is going to be very profitable for him, it's going to have a tremendous impact on the community, and these don't really, these impacts, the cost for these improvements would not be that much, considering the profits to be derived from this development.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay.
That was the last card I had. I think there's another two coming, so we'll wait. I have a card for Martine Smith.
Hi, I'm Martine Smith. I live near the North Forty, at, on Drake's Bay Avenue in Los Catos. And this has been, brought it before, about the health impacts of living so close to the freeway, if we're going to have any residential units there at all. A hotel being all right, because often the windows are hermetically sealed. However, in the case of a townhouse, or an apartment, or any other kind of residential housing, these are no longer allowed where I come from in Los Angeles, because they're called black lung lofts, they're just too darn close to the freeway. And if you take, I didn't bring my slides tonight, but if you take a trip through Google Earth, it's really fun, start at the south part of Los Catos, at the entrance, near Main Street, and you'll see that there's 100, 100 feet of trees on either side of the freeway entrance. If you go down to Highway 9, there's 100 feet of trees on either side of the freeway there. The gateway to Los Catos on the north side is barren, it's just, the trees have all been removed for farmland, and now that we're going to, and the houses that are there are 100 feet away from the freeway. And so my proposal is that we put in the specific plan amendments, a change to make a 100-foot tree easement between northbound Highway 17 and any occupied buildings, and that tree easement would have giant redwood trees, or live oak trees, both of which take a lot of the atmospheric pollutants away, and will increase the health of the whole area, and will certainly increase the beauty. And this goes to the specific plan that was originally done, that says that, that any development on this property should look and feel like Los Catos. Los Catos is trees, if nothing more, and so many people have come suggesting setbacks, and I'm suggesting to set back from the freeway property line to any dwellings. And that's, if you look at the Google Earth, you'll see that the dwellings that are there now, the little farmhouses and everything, are all 100 feet from the freeway, as would any rational, reasonable person want to be.
Are there questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Quintana, you have a card?
Lee Quintana, Five Palm Avenue. I'm going to be very short. I just wanted to comment that, glancing through the minutes for the last meeting, you discussed shoulds versus shalls, and where you wanted to change to should or shall. I'd like to add that there are many, there are probably another 20 different terms that are used in that document, without saying should or shall, but provide, or require, or encourage, or, you know, just a whole slew of them. And I think that because it's divided up between standards in one chapter, and guidelines in the other chapter, but there are some guidelines that have used these same languages, as do some of the standards, that you should indicate which of those words means shall, and which means standard. Other than that, I would just like to say that I'm late because I forgot about freeway closure, and I remember hearing people say that Los Catos aren't very kind or nice lately. There was somebody at the corner of Bayview and Main Street handing out power bars to the cars as they passed. I thought that was really great. And it looked like the police were talking to people at the corner of Main and Santa Cruz, and advising them a way to get back to where they were going. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Oh, yes, sir. Oh, yes, sir, there is a question for it. Commissioner Hudes?
In terms of your suggestion about clarifying more sort of objective standards, or objective language, shall and should throughout, are you suggesting that these other terms that are similar be defined in the glossary? Or are you suggesting that...
In the body itself, just like they were in the Ahas guidelines.
Okay. So in each one, it would be designated...
Well, instead of, yeah, either you change them to should or shall, all of them, one or the other, or you have a section in the document where you say which one of them means shall, and which one of them means should.
In a glossary?
No, in the bot, in the introduction.
Okay.
So it's clear. The other thing that, I'm not saying that just because you put a should or a shall, that a shall is necessarily an objective criteria. It's a shall, but it could be subjective.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. All right, I think that will end the public part of this, public comment part of this hearing. And we're going to go, first, I should say, we do have some desk items. And I should, oh, there's another card? Or no? Well, we have some desk items, and we should note that we received some correspondence, which is now part of the record. We have about 10 different communications. I won't go through them unless somebody wants us to. I don't know whether a copy of this was out in the lobby.
I have not been in the lobby, but it is also available online.
Okay, if anybody has not seen this and would like to get them, take a look out there. If they're not there, tell us, and we'll see that you get one. Okay, so now, our last hearing, we got all the way to commercial. And now, we're taking up from commercial, with the hope that we can proceed to completion. And I might just mention that Exhibit 12 to an earlier document, was Exhibit 9, pardon me, Exhibit 9, is a good way to follow what we're commenting on and what we're being asked to put some input on. So that having been said, I would ask for a staff assistance before we kick off with our discussions.
Well, I think you summarized it. We are going to continue the conversation and discussion from page eight of Exhibit 9, where the commercial begins. And so we'll go through each of these topics. And then, I believe, at the last hearing, it was if people had things to say or had questions, then they would raise those as we went through the items. And then, we will do our best to provide any answers that we can at this point.
Okay. Commissioner, Vice Chair Kane has a question.
First half. Recommendations for affecting the traffic flow to Highway 17 caused me to think back to Alberta Way, where we made recommendations regarding the traffic flow on Highway 17. And I believe we were advised that that's a hands-off Caltrans situation. We couldn't affect that if we wanted to, is that true?
Well, there's a couple of things. One is, there has to be a nexus to require those. And so the environmental impact report that was prepared and confirmed for the former proposal states what needs to be done. To go above and beyond that, we would need some substantial evidence that that is necessary and an obligation of any future applicant. And I don't believe we have that evidence. And the town attorney would like to speak more to that. The second part, before he may jump in, is that, yes, if there is an improvement on Caltrans property, then obviously it has to go through Caltrans process, and that would be something that if...
So we couldn't do it if we wanted to? It's their turf.
The town couldn't alone improve Caltrans right-of-way. But we could work with them if that's something that was required by the environmental document. But it was not.
Which it is not. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Hudes?
I wonder if I could make some sort of broad comments about commercial before we dive into the specifics of a CUP here or there?
Before we do that, let's all get on the same page. We had some questions from staff. Now, your suggestion, and I think it's a correct one, you can go ahead and begin with our comments. So if you'd like to lead off, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. So, and I want to compliment staff on the excellent report that we're working from and interpreting the direction that we got from council about areas of concern. And I think that particularly in the area of residential, we've made a lot of progress in addressing those concerns. In the area of commercial, I think that some of it is addressed here, but I think there's a little bit larger context that I just would like to address first before we dive in. And, you know, we've heard testimony from many people, and there are some people who talk about protecting the downtown. And I actually don't feel that we should be protecting or eliminating competition, because I don't think that creates the most vibrant kind of an economic environment. I think that the vibrancy of our economic environment in downtown and across town is actually helped by competition. And so I, but I do think that there is very important to have a level playing field so that the downtown can be on a footing where it can compete effectively with what is likely to be a very large commercial development going into the North Forty as it's currently contained. So if you think about, you know, leveling a playing field, you have to think about two parts of the field to kind of get it level. We are only focused on the North Forty end of that. That's the purview of this committee, is to look at that now. So there might be wishful things we could hope for in terms of changes to downtown businesses and downtown regulations, but that's not within our purview. So I wanted to focus on the things that we can do on the North Forty. And so, you know, the first set of ideas is around implementing some commercial use policies, because there's really very little in the plan now. And so that could include a distribution matrix that specifies the amount of square footage by business type. That was considered at one time by the North Forty Specific Plan Advisory Committee. Also, I would suggest maybe considering limiting the Phase 1 retail to 16 units and 67,000 square feet, and limiting the Phase 2 to 32 units and 300,000 square feet. Also, I would include with that, including the requirement to objectively analyze the economic impacts of any development. And not just the plan itself, but the actual application to come in with a rigorous economic analysis. There was an economic analysis provided. There are some requirements to do that, but I think we could be more specific about what we'd like to see in that kind of an economic analysis. And then, there's the CUP requirements, which I think are addressed in this document. So I'm eager to, you know, discuss those as well, because as you know, CUPs are required in many, many areas in the downtown. And as the specific plan is currently written, there are virtually no commercial CUPs required. So I think that's an important thing to look at. But there were also some other ideas here. Transit, looking at encouraging transit connections between a shopping center in the North Forty and the downtown, so that we get some synergies between the two. And then, also requiring that if a large commercial development is put into the North Forty, that there be a cross-marketing plan, and some funding of cross-marketing activities, so that we could encourage people who come to town to take advantage of our downtown. And then, the other idea here would be to either have a current standing committee or a new group monitor the economic impacts of what's going on in downtown, as we start to see the development of hundreds of thousands of square feet of retail, so that adjustments could be made to these ideas, because we know that this is a kind of a living reality of what happens with commercial economics, with the rise of the internet, et cetera. So either making this the requirement for an existing body in town, or creating a new standing Economic Vitality Advisory Group. So those are some suggestions that I would ask to be considered as part of the plan that are a little bit broader than the specifics that are in here.
Vice Chair Kane?
You've done your homework. Excellent comments. I have some questions on your comments. What is a cross-marketing plan?
So, to me, that would be some kind of a plan for the, let's say, there is a new shopping center, to have ideas that could benefit the downtown. For instance, a space for a pop-up store, that could be a downtown store having a presence in the North Forty. Or signage, or marketing, so that people who are in the shopping center know that there's a downtown, and that there's some advantages there. And the other way around as well. So that would be, it would be a document that would be created that would describe how the marketing would occur.
And a follow-up. Another one of your subject were the CUPs. Now, in the revision that we're working with, I guess the General Plan, yeah, General Plan Committee put this together, Exhibit 9, it shows the commercial types of enterprises, and they've all been changed to, as I read them, they've all been changed to CUPs. Is that the way you read them? On Exhibit 9, page 8?
Yeah, these haven't been discussed yet, though. So it was in that context that I think that some CUPs, I mean, I looked into CUPs, and there are some 90 different cases of where CUPs are used in town. And I think that the General Plan Committee, in looking at the potential focused on the ones that are in this document, which I think are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 type of CUPs, if I'm not correct.
Right. So I would say, my contribution to this would be to tell council, because you all can make individual comments, to make suggestions to council, that they go ahead with the CUP provisions for the North Forty, to some extent, as you say. However, there's a very interesting letter from Mr... Sure, when you want the letter, you can't find it. I had 15 pencils in on it.
Mr. Ferrari, maybe?
Mr. Ferrari. Tom, Tom Ferrari, right?
Doug Ferrari.
Doug Ferrari, my good friend Doug Ferrari. He makes the point that if we put the CUP requirements on the enterprises in the North Forty, and if you envision that and plan it out, then we're looking at 30 applications, 25, 30 applications at once. And he makes the cynical observation, I think, that we sometimes have trouble getting one application through within two months. Aside from that cynicism, if we do have CUP provisions for the North Forty, we ought to plan ahead, that there will be congestion, much like the traffic outside right now. And we should have a format or a vision to minimize that. That is to say, maybe an expedited process. Maybe we schedule, dare I say, extra meetings for a short period of time. But we need to do something that if we do have those CUPs, we need to prevent CUP gridlock. And so I think his letter was outstanding on that point. I support the CUPs. But if we get 25 of them, we have a problem.
I'm going to make a suggestion, just one second, that at the moment, we're talking big-picture items. Eventually, I would like to start with page 8, paragraph starting with "commercial." And if we could follow that pattern, it's going to be a lot easier for us to follow. And I should think it would be easier for the staff, too. That having been said, Commissioner Hanson?
I had a question on exactly that. I really appreciate all of Commissioner Hudes's suggestions. My question for staff, I was, although I think those are all pretty good ideas, I thought our direction from council was to be very specific and limited in terms of this list of things that they had for us to look at. I'm not personally against looking at other stuff, but I thought that was our direction. So I just wondered if we're really in a position to take on looking at more strategic issues in our review of the plan.
Let me say something, and then we can ask staff. But my reading of where we are really is that we should address the issues raised by the council. And some of those, we may say elaborate on, or some of those, we may say, we don't think that's a good idea, or we don't think that's feasible. I do think the more, the bigger picture from a distance probably is not going to be helpful at this stage, because I think what we're trying to do, and this is part of the reason I think the council really wanted this expedited, was they came out with a lot of recommendations. And if we could respond to those recommendations, I think it would, should be helpful, and it also would mean there'd be an end to this process, which I think the council would greatly appreciate. So if, I would like, I think, to follow up with what Commissioner Hanson's saying, I agree with what you're saying. And again, I'd like to urge us to start, we all have Exhibit 9. And if you start on page 8, because that's where we left off the last hearing, if we could take these paragraphs, and starting with 1, the CUP requirements, and deal with them, seri Adam, so that we don't tout out the big pictures, but take one item at a time. Yes, go ahead.
This is a question about the specific item.
Okay.
First half. Do the other shopping centers in Las Gatos, such as Vizcaya Station or the Downing Center, also have CUPs similar to the downtown shops?
Generally, yes, with the exception of personal service businesses and formula retail has a different caveat outside the downtown. It only requires a conditional use permit if a space is over 6,000 square feet for a formula retail.
So generally speaking, applying the CUPs to the North Forty wouldn't be substantially different from the way other retail centers have been treated?
The question would be, you know, the question asked was specifically for downtown. However, this table would change for formula retail and personal service, because those are both outside of downtown. If you look at the greater Las Gatos area outside of downtown, those do not require conditional use permits. So it's in the middle.
So it is different, okay. Thank you.
And the reason for that, if I can ask you, was, is the reason for that, because of our desire to protect the downtown, and therefore have perhaps more stringent rules?
The reason for that is that was one of the potential suggestions for amendments, and so staff was responding to that at both General Plan Committee and here before you at council.
I ask that, too, because as I understand, the Chamber of Commerce and others, they would like us to remove many, if not all, of the CUP requirements. I hear them constantly saying that we are, we being the town, are an impediment. We all know that our retail is going down downtown, and some attribute to different things. But I always hear over and over again, things like the CUP requirements don't help. But is it fair to say that the downtown would like to have many of the CUP requirements removed?
I think that's a fair assumption, and we hear similar comments from the community. There have been a few efforts over the past year, year and a half, to try to look at just that, alleviating some of the requirements downtown to make it a little simpler and cheaper to get through the process. However, with the exception of allowing valet parking and allowing outdoor seating, none of those other efforts have been finalized or approved yet.
But they're in process?
They have been discussed before, and they come around in a circle, and they'll be coming back. Many of them will be coming back to the council for that discussion.
Okay. So, yes, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, going back now specifically to the CUP requirement, which is paragraph 1, if each of us who may wish to contribute any thoughts to that, for example, this talks about CUPs, but it also talks about consider maximum square footages as another avenue of looking at it. So I would encourage us to speak to those issues now. Yes, Commissioner?
All right, so I'll start cutting to the chase here on number one. And I'm going to say that I'm in favor of the CUP, not so much to match the downtown, or not so much to have a level playing field, but because I see the CUP as being a check-and-balance tool. And it encourages and maintains a mix of uses for synergistic vitality.
Are there other comments? Other other comments? Yes, Commissioner Hughes.
With regard to the CUPs, and I think that they, that it is an effective mechanism for encouraging some of the vitality, I wanted to just point out, because maybe everyone hasn't had a chance to read all of the economic reports, there were four reports that were written. The first one was about leakage, the second one was part of the EIR, there was a third one, which I thought was quite detailed, which was from a professor at San Jose State, he works for Trulia, and I wanna quote from, from the report, because it was some time ago, it's in the stack of the Mountain of Materials. But one of his statements, I think, is really relevant to this consideration. It says, "Thus, if the preference of the residents of the town of Los Gatos is to keep existing small business in downtown Los Gatos, then implementing a regulatory scheme in the North Forty that mimics the same procedural requirements for business operation in downtown Los Gatos would keep the level playing field even in both locations, and would reduce the incentive for businesses to move from the DLG downtown Los Gatos to the North Forty." And so although I didn't necessarily reach agreement with all of the conclusions in the report, it was interesting that he analyzed the data, and it did, it did seem that this would be a mechanism, and so I'm strongly in support of looking at some CUPs in the North Forty, a limited number that would be relevant to the downtown and to other areas of town, actually.
All right, Commissioner Hanson?
So, since Commissioner Hughes and I were both on the General Plan Committee, I, and please correct me if I misunderstood anything, but we discussed the economic reports, and we discussed this issue at length, and I, I thought we got some particular wisdom from council on this, and whatever I remember the discussion going was, in addition to the economic reports, was it a discussion about, that came from, you know, the experienced council members, about how downtown Los Gatos isn't like downtown Saratoga because of the things that we've done with our CUPs, otherwise we might be all restaurants. And that's what's happened to a lot of downtowns and places that have started new centers, and they're turning out to be eighty percent restaurants. And I think we've heard some of this at planning commission. So we got strong influence from some of our council members, and then the General Plan Committee concurred with that to, that the right way to attack this wasn't to remove the CUPs from downtown, even though, you know, that was, there was, you know, some movement for that, but it was rather to, to put CUPs on specific types of uses, commercial uses in the North Forty, including the ones on this list, restaurant, personal service, so there's a way to, to make sure that we got the end result that we wanted. And I think that's why we got consensus on that. So I definitely support what's in here, because I was part of that process, but I didn't know if that would help to hear, you know, kind of where, how we got to that conclusion.
Thank you. Other comments? Commissioner Janoff?
Just to provide input, I am also in agreement with the CUPs being consistent with the downtown. So what is in here, I think, looks good.
I might make a comment, then, having heard from everybody. I would not like to see a general application of CUP. I think some of the criticisms of the CP use in downtown are accurate, some of them. I think in general, probably is the necessary thing, and that may be the same for the North Forty. But I don't think, I mean, I think we should decide which uses should have a CUP and not a blanket requirement. Blanket requirements skip the important human input of why do we need that? Secondly, for example, on the matter under litigation, the specific plan, the amount of commercial in the first development was not, I didn't think was all that significant. So when we talk about an existing development plan which may or may not survive the litigation, that at least is some evidence to us of what one might anticipate. Because as you know, we are now doing something we didn't have to do with the first go-around, where we spent seven or eight years on somebody else's money, getting all kinds of input and that kind of thing. At the moment, we have wonderful health and staff, but they've got a lot to do. We don't have that kind of input. So I would, I'm not in favor of a blanket application of a CUP to the North Forty. So that's enough said. Any more on that? It looks to me, and just in passing, that, I wanna be clear on that. It's not clear to me that you all were saying we should have a blanket CUP requirement, or are you saying we should be careful about where we apply the CUPs?
I don't think we should have a blanket CUP. In particular, I mean, it's the formula retail, the market hall, the restaurant, and the personal service. Especially personal service and restaurants, we can just be inundated with that. As we tend to get downtown, there seems to be a great mix of that, and it takes away from people wanting to shop in the small retail stores and maybe spend an afternoon downtown, which gives them reason to spend money at other shops. Otherwise, it just becomes a destination if it becomes all restaurants. But those are my four in particular that I'd wanna see a CUP for.
The personal service you mentioned, what specifically do you have in mind?
Oh, for personal, like people getting their nails done or their hair done?
So you would, okay, so you're saying those things you'd like to limit by the use of a CUP?
Correct.
Those four things, okay.
Correct.
Other comments? Yes, Commissioner Hanson?
Staff, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's quite a number of other permitted retail uses in the North Forty specific plan. This is the only ones that would, are proposed to have a CUP, other than, unless there was some other ones that are...
So I'll clarify, there are a number of additional uses in the permitted use table. This list is specifically the uses that are, do not meet the requirements of downtown as currently with conditional use permits. And so this is a small subset of the permitted uses.
Right. So it's not a request for a blanket CUP, it's just these specific uses, and that was, those are the ones that were called out to add a CUP where there wasn't one in the specific plan previously.
Correct. Previously, these were permitted uses, there are other uses that require a CUP, they just also require a CUP downtown, so they're not on this list.
Okay.
Let me see if I understand that. You're saying that this list does not mean that there are not other uses for the North Forty as originally put forward, that we would require a CUP. These are simply examples of CUPs that are not required under the existing specific plan, but are required downtown.
These are the only instances where the permitting of them through a CUP or a permitted use is different than what is required in downtown, so it's just these five categories.
And if these were, let's say, changed to CUPs, then would it be fair to say we'd be on the same footing with downtown?
For the uses, correct.
Okay. And the other thing I just raise, and for people to think about, it is obvious to me as I walk through downtown and I see retail closing, that the internet may have something to do with this. We always like to blame it on CUPs, we like to blame it on this, we like to blame it on that. We don't talk much about what the effect of internet shopping is, and whether, no matter what we do with CUPs, what the impact is. And so I just mentioned that, because again, I was walking downtown today, and I saw another store closing, and I don't think it has much to do with CUPs. Yes?
Commissioner O'Donnell, to that, we don't know if it's a byproduct of increasing rents so that the tenant could not keep up with a huge rent increase from the landlord.
Well, if you have enough vacancies, the rents will go down. And I don't think that's what we want, however. I don't think we want a lot of vacancies. But I'm not in favor of high rent either. I'm just saying, it is true, if you have a very popular place, then your rents can go up. So there's a happy medium, I guess. I think there's always concern if enough stores go out of business and are not replaced by a like-kind business. And I just have a concern with that, because over the years, I've watched all these businesses go out of business for reasons that have nothing to do with town regulations. Vice Chair Kane?
I support Commercial One as written. Can we go to number two?
You're talking about specifically, you're talking about Paragraph One or Paragraph Three, which is...
Commercial, Commercial One, page eight.
Well, that includes a number of subsections, right?
No, then I'm going on to number two, Commercial Two, top of page nine.
Okay. Well, okay, because we were talking about Three at the moment, which is the CUPs.
And so I'll just clarify, One and Three are very similar. There's just, it's a different topic in Three than One. One is, there was a recommendation to consider allowing more commercial in the Lark District, and so that's what's represented in Three. One is what we've been talking about. I think it sounds like the majority of the commission is in favor of the proposal on One, and then with the chair's comments also noted, which will be in the record as well.
Well, through the chair, I didn't wanna go out of line, but I would support Paragraph Three as written as well.
Well, let me just also say, I don't support Paragraph One as written. I would like to be a little more selective on the CUPs, but I think that I'm in the minority on that, so, but I did want the record to reflect that.
Maybe I could just inquire of the chair, which ones would you not be supportive of, and maybe some, maybe understand a little bit?
Well, for example, the Market Hall Specialty Retail, that's a single use on the property, and that will have a number of uses within that use. So when we say a CUP for the Market Hall Specialty Retail, it isn't clear to me why that's necessary. It depends really on what's in the market use, all of which, my understanding, at least on the other, were tenants. Now, if one were to sell alcohol or something like that, yes, you should have a CUP. If one were to have a restaurant selling alcohol. But just the concept of a Market Hall Specialty Retail, I don't know, I just don't know if that needs a CUP.
And maybe just a little background on that one, because that came up in the general plan, and it came up at Town Council as well. And I believe Councilmember Rennie suggested changing to allow a Market Hall in the downtown. It's currently not a permitted use. So this is, that's an example of something where I think that this document could be changed if changes were made downtown. And if things were loosened up downtown, then it would be natural to remove some of the restrictions here as well.
Well, we know, for example, the Sunday Market downtown is, in essence, a Market Hall without a hall. But that's only on Sunday, and I don't know the requirements of that. But it does exist, so I guess the question then becomes, well, I mean, is it gonna be tit-for-tat on everything we're gonna do? Or are we also gonna... I think that a lot of the downtown would like us to address the CUP so we make it less cumbersome. If the argument is, well, so long as it's cumbersome downtown, it must be cumbersome here, I have a problem with that. I think I'd rather address downtown's problems than simply saddle another problem on another location.
Yeah, I would as well, but unfortunately, that's not in our purview.
Well, it is in our purview to say whether we think we want that many use permits on this, because that is what, that is our purview. And if our rationale is because of this other thing that we can't talk about, I have a problem with that. So anyway, I think, yes.
So to that point, perhaps it would be worth including a comment that says, while we agree with providing CUPs that are consistent with downtown on the North Forty, on these particular items, should, given the work of staff and council in terms of reviewing the CUPs in general, should it get relaxed downtown, relax it at North Forty, too? I mean, there's no point in keeping the competition when you relieve it on one side or the other.
The other thing I'm concerned about is, at the moment, we have two large users, and the, a specific plan that was approved is in litigation. It becomes more difficult, if we have roughly forty acres, instead of having, let's just say, two plus, maybe three, including the senior housing, if it were broken up into five-acre pieces, whatever, we don't know, we don't know the economics. But if the litigation is won, and a new specific plan is adopted, it could be developed in one-acre pots, or five-acre pots, twenty-acre, but we don't know. So what I wanna be careful of is, since we don't know the future on that, we don't wanna make it such that it will be unsuccessful. Downtown, however we look at it, and there are those of us that really admire downtown and wanna keep it, keep it good, I think we also have to remember, it's been there a long time, and it has some history that this does not. And I don't know that we could simply say we should treat something brand-new that we don't even know about, the same as we treat something that we do know about that has a history. So I would like for us to consider the effect of the CUPs on a new and unknown development as opposed to simply say, well, because they do it downtown, you must do it here. But I'll be happy to say that's the minority position, and a very narrow minority, me. Yes, Commissioner Badami?
I would like to say that the downtown is successful and has a history of being successful because we have CUPs.
Fine. Okay, we can move on, then.
Where do you wanna go?
We've covered, we've covered one, two, well, two was only allow commercial and mixed use on Los Gatos Boulevard, we haven't talked about that.
Chair? We actually talked about that during residential, so we actually have resolved that, so I don't think we need to discuss that unless anyone has anything further to discuss on item two.
That's fine. Okay, and we've talked about Three, which we're just doing now. We haven't talked, at least, I don't think we talked about Four, which is consider maximum square footages for commercial uses instead of CUPs. I see hands going up. Commissioner Badami?
So when I look at number four, were we supposed to get a table? Because if you read the last paragraph, the first paragraph on number four, it says, "Staff will provide the planning commission a table that may provide us with a distribution matrix, with ranges recommending a number of tenant spaces, et cetera."
You are, and I have that right here, and I will pass that out and put it up on the overhead. This was from a previous version. There used to be a table that you'll see as we pass that out, and then I will put one up on the overhead as well.
You are on it. Thank you.
Do you wanna ask a question, staff?
Mr. Paulson, if we have supported one, two, and three, at least the majority, does that not preclude a discussion of number four?
It doesn't preclude a discussion of number four. There may be some opinions on that.
Number four seems to be in conflict with the other three.
I think it would be helpful, since we will not make the ultimate decision, the decision-maker, to hear our thoughts on another possibility, which is the reason we have four. Commissioner Hughes?
You know, I'm very familiar with this chart, it came in and out of the draft a number of times, and the numbers, ranges, it came in and out of it. I personally believe that the CUP is a more effective mechanism than the chart, but I think it could be...
I'm sorry. So I think that that chart is...
Just one second, so we can put it up on the board so the audience can see what we're talking about. But go ahead.
So, you know, this chart, which I'm familiar with, has come in and out of the draft a number of times. I personally am in favor of the CUP mechanism over this chart because of some of the challenges when we got into the details of this previously. However, I believe that it should be provided to council, should they, you know, not really wanna consider the CUP mechanism. I think for reasons really stated by Dr. McLaughlin, that the CUP, that the regulatory scheme is the right one to focus on as compared to something new, which we really don't know whether this would work or not.
All right, other comments?
I'm in agreement with Commissioner Hughes on that.
Others?
Well...
Well, see, me, too.
Okay. Anybody else wanna comment? I, I think I can agree with that position, too. Okay, so that's, I think we've now discussed Four, which moves us to Five, which is consider a reduction in the amount of commercial square footage, which, as I understand it, and I can't tell by looking at this, maybe, this used to have hotel, office hotel, and that's been moved. And Mr. Erickson, in his comments, did comment about the hotel situation. Should I be looking elsewhere for the, two, five, one talks about the hotel. So the removal of it from Table Two-Two is because of that latter paragraph?
So the suggestion, and I can't remember if it was from council or from the General Plan Committee in discussing commercial, they thought that it may be appropriate to split hotel and office apart. In the current plan, it's a, you know, office slash hotel with a maximum of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square feet. And so the discussion by the GPC was to split those apart, and these numbers are really, and I will say this again, as I haven't said it at this hearing, that these numbers are really starting points. These aren't, there's nothing scientific about these, so if commissioners have other suggestions or ideas, we're definitely here to hear those.
Commissioner Hughes?
Yeah, I was just gonna suggest that we go back to two, five, one... Yeah, I was just going to suggest that we go back to two, five, one. If we've moved on to five, it makes more sense to maybe look at the total maximum capacity first before we get into the hotel part of it, is a process suggestion. The question I had was, are we talking about 435,000 or 385,000? Because I see on the next page, under the bottom part of five, you know, the top of page eleven, it says the total new square footage shall not exceed 385,000 square feet. And then here, we're, under two, five, one, we're talking about 435. Could you clarify which number was the recommendation of the general plan committee?
So there, I don't believe there was an actual number recommended. The recommendation was to reduce the commercial, and so this is what staff put together. And this confusion came up as well, I think Ms. Decker mentioned it at the last meeting. So if you look at the two, five, one on page ten, which is above number five, it has in the not strike through or red line language, the current plan. And then when you get over to the number five, these notes are underneath that table. And so the reduction here was a 50,000 square foot reduction. That's why 435 goes down to 385.
Okay, so that's, that's the way it was interpreted, that the total that we're looking at is 385?
That would be the total for commercial, absent hotel and office, which would have their own categories.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hanson?
The other thing I don't know if we talked about, but in two, five, one, there was a discussion by the general plan committee about having a limit of the amount of total square footage in each district, in concert with the discussion we had about spreading the residential across. And so if you look in the red line comments, it talked about, because this is not in the plan right now, having 15% in the Lark District, 35% in the transition district, and 50% of the square footage in the Northern District. And that was the consensus that the general plan committee came to, is that to try and put some, some numbers around the concept of each district, you know, because we were kind of spreading things out, that we needed to look at the commercial as well as the residential if we were going to go in that direction. So I just wanted to call that out as a point that was added, and I just thought that the planning commission should discuss that, whether it made sense or not to, you know, pass that along to council.
Other comments? Yes, Commissioner Badami?
Well, I was getting ready to move on to number five, but if Commissioner Hudes still wants to comment on the two point five point, two point five point one, go ahead.
Yeah, I think that I am in favor of some distribution of the commercial in conjunction with distribution of the residential. It makes sense, since we're talking about a mixed use, to do something like that. I think that in general, these percentages make sense as a starting point for consideration. And so I'm in favor conceptually. I have a little sort of language concern about the way it's written, and I think it actually goes back to the residential as well, that if you say that a percentage shall not exceed, it still has to add up to 100% at the end of the day, right? So if, for instance, you only did 10% in the Lark District, then you would not have the ability to get to 100% again. So it'd probably be better to call out the specific square footage, you know, taking 15% of 385,000, and which I think is 57,500, as, in the way the document's written, just as a suggestion.
Yes, Vice Chair Kane first?
She wants to respond to something.
I thought you did too. Okay, go right ahead.
In response.
Fine, fine.
Just following up on both of the underlined suggestions on two, five, one, there is an issue with developers coming in at different times. If somebody hits the maximum, then they hit it, or they, or if they don't, then you can't get to it if it's, if it's fully developed. So I think it's, I agree that a language change could benefit perhaps ranges, not, not, this is not to exceed 15%. That's a pretty hard stop, but if it's between such and such and such and such, and then at the bottom, not to exceed 100%, so that you get, you get, and perhaps you can incentivize developers to take advantage of the higher percentage to meet that target, because if you don't, then you don't know what, what other developers may come up with next. So anyway, we had this discussion along the same lines with the residential at 40, 30, 30. Give a range so we can get, get some flexibility, so that if we don't hit it in one district, then you might have an opportunity to push it forward to the next.
Staying on this one paragraph, is there another comment? Go ahead, Vice Chair Kane.
That was going to be my comment, that ironically, as, as in favor of, I am of the 3,000 changes to the verb shall, this is a place where I'd like it to be out, and allow council to have the flexibility to use common sense. If it's 16 versus 34, they should be able to do that. And the other thing I wanted to go back is to former Commissioner Erickson. He was talking about research on what is a full-service hotel, and I want to apply my same thought pattern to that, that council should have the flexibility to decide what kind of a hotel, not a convention center necessarily, maybe a convention center, so that the civic social groups in town will have a place to meet. And if that takes 200,000 square feet, then that's what it should be. I wouldn't put a limit on the hotel until it's decided what kind of hotel we want, and I would hope that that would be a full-service hotel, so that all of the organizations in town, I think you left out the Los Gatos Morning Rotary, Commissioner, but Los Gatos Morning Rotary would also like a place to meet, in addition to all the other civic organizations. That's the flexibility staff, town council should have, along with the sentiment that we want a place for these other organizations to meet.
Let me make a comment here, too. The hotel is something that I think the town would like to have, depending on what the hotel is, all the normal things. So I think, when I see it taking 250 and splitting it arbitrarily, I think it's arbitrarily, to 150 and 100, we may not want to limit ourselves on the hotel. We don't have, certainly the town, to the best of my knowledge, doesn't have anybody lining up to come in with a hotel. We also don't really know where the hotel would go, but we know after, having looked at the residential in our prior meeting, it gets rather complex, because instead of being, putting all the housing in the first two areas, now we've said they should be spread along the third, and we know that if you want to put in a hotel that, let's say is 250,000 square feet, rather than 150,000 square feet, it becomes rather tricky as you develop, because again, with two developers, or three developers, there's really two on this one, the third was fixed, they are massaging how that's done. Here, we're doing it by guessing, by golly, but I would like to make sure that we leave open space, whether it's in what we call transitional or the north for the hotel, and the additional square footage would be applicable only to the hotel, because there's a concern about retail, which I can understand. But were we to have an opportunity to have a hotel that we would always, all be pleased with, I would hate to make it so limited, and this was Mr. Erickson's comment, so no good, normal hotel, as opposed to perhaps a small, good hotel, would want. So I would like to see us note that. Here, we talk about 150 and 100. I'd like to flag the hotel, so it wouldn't be so limited, depending on what the use specifically is. Yes, Commissioner Hanson?
I had the same thought. Well, the original proposal, it was office hotel up to 250,000, so the thought that went through my mind was, well, what happened if the first proposal came in and for 200,000 square feet of office space? And, you know, and then we didn't, we wouldn't have room to do the hotel. And I know from our council members and most of the general plan committee, there was a, as well as our economic vitality team, there was a really strong preference for trying to do whatever we could to incent a hotel to come. So the last thing I would want to do is have general office take away from that. So I, I understand why we separated it out, but I would kind of be more in favor of putting as much as we could in hotel, and then whatever was left for office, as our recommendation.
I think Commissioner Badami, did you have your hand up a moment ago?
I did a couple of minutes ago. I was actually in agreement as well. I thought Mr. Erickson brought up some excellent points, and I didn't see the need to, or the desire to separate the office from the hotel. But I did have a question. Before, it was 250,000, 250,000 square feet, so then they want office at 150 and hotel at 150. So we're saying, leave it at 250,000 for either the office or hotel?
No, I'm not saying that.
Okay, well, I'm just, I want clarification on that.
Let's let everybody comment, find out what everybody's saying. Commissioner Hudes?
Yeah, and kind of going back to the way we developed some of these numbers in the original draft, there was, sort of, it was purposeful to put numbers that didn't add up, meaning that they could be used for various things. So for instance, you know, the total is 501,000, but if you add up the 250 plus the 400, you have 650,000. So the market kind of drives that usage by who's eager to come in and make an application, et cetera. And so I actually think that this is a very important feature of this zoning, the ability to have a hotel, probably not a huge hotel, but a boutique or an upscale hotel, in conjunction with office, and create what you see in other innovation centers up and down the Bay Area, where you have office that isn't traditional office so much as either incubator space, or startup space, or space for venture capital, and hotel for entrepreneurs to come in to that, to that area. You see that on Sand Hill Road, and you see that in, in the East Bay, and you see that in San Francisco as well. So I think the concept of keeping those two in one category is, is a good one, and kind of let the market drive it. I actually, sort of rolling around in my head whether that number should be 300,000, in case we did get, you know, 150,000 for a boutique hotel and 150,000 for office, but I'd be interested in, in other people's reactions to 300,000.
Commissioner Janoff had her hand up for next.
Yeah, and as I read this table, it does increase from 250,000 square feet to 300,000 square feet, so that, so in response, I think, to the public and the council, it has, has bumped up. But I agree that if you want, if you want to incentivize, I'm thinking of this incentivizing thing. I mean, how do you get people excited about coming in? You give them some flexibility, you give them, okay, well, if you come in with 150, it's so much. But if you come in with 200, and it's a hotel, then we'll give you, and you know, just sort of, so I'm in favor of keeping the number bundled rather than breaking it out, in order to give the decision makers the opportunity to come in with some interesting and creative plans, and the council, the planning commission, the opportunity to look at some kind of creative ways to go about obtaining what the town really wants.
Commissioner Badami?
Perhaps we also want to look at taking away the commercial square footage even further, and adding that square footage on to the office hotel, which would protect the downtown that everybody's so worried about, so.
Again, I have the problem in that, I don't know how many shopping centers you've done, I mean, literally done, but I would guess most of us have never built a shopping center. The further we get into what would take an experienced person to, to go, the less likely it is that it's going to be a good idea. Now, that's not to say what our role is, is good, but I think we have to be just careful not to so micromanage it that we will not get anybody to be interested in it. So I like, what I've heard is, you want some flexibility. So if a hotel came in and said, geez, 150 is too small, could we have 200, we'd at least like to have the discretion to be able to do that. Now, if the, if the feeling is that we don't want more than pick a number on the office, if we combine the two, we might have some flexibility with the hotel that we're not, we're not prepared to give ourselves with the office, and that'd be fine, too, because offices are perhaps easier to deal with than the concept of the hotel, because offices come in different sizes and shapes. Hotels are less, less like that, even though there are different sizes and shape. So I'm just saying, I would hope our flexibility at least goes to the hotel, and if you think it should also go as to the offices, we should say that. Yes, Commissioner Hudes?
So I just have a suggestion, maybe to put that into place, and say that the, the total for office and hotel would not exceed 300, and the total for office would not exceed 150, but to leave flexibility on the hotel side.
I like that concept.
What if we don't get a hotel?
The question is, what if we don't get a hotel, which is a good question. I think that when we talked about, we have to have percentages that add up to more than 100%. I think the percentages will have to allow for the, are not getting something. So that I would not want to preclude the build-out of a project, because we're sitting there waiting for the non-existent hotel, and we have office users who want to use it, and we're, lock our hands. Now, obviously, you can take steps to unlock your hands, but perhaps we could do that again with percentages, and perhaps we can do it with language, how we're trying to encourage the hotel. I don't know how, I don't know how you do that.
Yeah, there's multiple options. I think it's fairly clear from the comments that a hotel is an important component, and so whatever we can do to allow flexibility for a hotel, I think there's also a desire that if there's office, whether it's the incubator scenario, so we could just use numbers either split or together. Under the proposal here, you know, maybe office not to exceed 100,000 square feet, and then hotel not to exceed 250,000 square feet, which gives that flexibility. You're still over the 100%. And then you can also discuss whether or not the 350 for all the other commercial uses is appropriate as well. But that would provide you the flexibility, gives you some caps from the office, so that it isn't, you know, if you put it in the office hotel, you could get, you know, 250,000 square feet of office. That probably wouldn't align with the EIR, so that that would be an additional limitation. But, you know, that's something to consider, and that, that's one option.
Yeah, and I would be concerned about putting something in here that would take us out of alignment with the EIR, which was specific instructions from council.
Well, we will revisit the EIR before we're through, because council did raise that issue, and I think we should discuss it, because I know that the town's desire is to stay with the same EIR, and I can understand that. So at the end of the day, we should revisit where we are, and discuss whether that will be consistent, in our view, with the EIR, as opposed to finding out later that it wasn't. Yes, Commissioner Hudes?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to express support for the community development director's suggestion of office 100 and hotel 250 maximums. I think that gives us the flexibility for some of the things that Mr. Erickson suggested as well. And I think it, it also has the side benefit of keeping us under the EIR number of 250 for, for office, which is, you know, the one that we're worried about.
The only question I have is, if you don't get a hotel, and you've allocated, let's say, 150 or 200,000, or whatever the number is, the hotel, and you've allocated the balance to the office, and you're sitting there with a vacant lot.
Well, you still have, remember, you have a 501,000 maximum overall, so you still have 385,000 maximum for commercial.
Well, we haven't been very clear on that, I don't think, at least in my mind. But if that's the intent, I would subscribe to that. I just didn't hear us say that. Is that, does that, the staff understand that better than I did?
Yes, so I think 501 is the absolute cap for new commercial, or for commercial. And so you do have that cap, which could be lowered, depending on whether or not the general commercial was lowered, or it could be kept the same.
Well, the way we're dividing this up, too, particularly if we're going to spread the residential over what I will call three areas, and so we'll have more residential in the transitional, and more residential, certainly more residential in the, in the northerly. We also have to consider where the hotel would go, and so that this balancing will work out. And if staff feels that they can do that, that's great. Okay, Commissioner Badami?
Well, I would say that the hotel could only go in the Northern District.
And why is that?
Because if you look at the purpose and reason for having districts... Because if you look at the purpose and, and reason for having districts, it's too.
Well, we're essentially throwing out what we did originally, as you recall. A transitional district is a transitional district if one part was really residential and one part was basically not residential, except for the second story residential. We're now saying, no, that's, that's out. We're going to spread the residential out and therefore you won't have to have second floor residential only in the northerly. So if we want to continue to think where, where we, we are, where we were, I don't think we are. I'm not suggesting we should therefore build a hotel someplace else, but I'm just saying it does change because if somebody came in and said, you want 20% or 25% in the so-called northerly district, and they do that, then the question is how much is left? If it's split between office and hotel, will it be big enough for a hotel? Whereas, again, we, our discussion at the last meeting, how we split up the total was, is, is rather critical here. And we just have to make sure they all meld together. Yes, Commissioner Hanson?
I just wanted to point out that in the existing specific plan, if you look at the table of permitted land uses 2 dot 1, 2 dash 1, hotels are permitted in the transition district and in the northern district and office is permitted in all three districts. And we, there's no proposed change to that. So at the moment, that would be the case. If they could make it work with the other things that are going on.
Well, that's, that's a good point. So we don't have to do anything, but it could, under that, be in one of two districts and I suppose straddle two districts. Okay, so other comments on that one area we're talking about? If not, we can move on.
I'm not ready to move on.
Okay, I'm sorry. Right ahead.
So we still have this category of commercial and it was 400,000 and now we've decreased it to 350,000. But I think it's still within our purview as the planning commission to decrease it further. We've heard public testimony from members of the public that probably are more knowledgeable than I am about the competition, et cetera, and what might be appropriate for that site. So I would like for us to consider possibly decreasing that number further.
Comments? I guess the problem I have is the numbers originally came up after, I don't know whether it was seven years or eight years of discussion and a lot of input. And now we're saying, with all due respect, we have no background. If we simply say, raise your hands, all those who want to have less of everything, we'll get a lot of hands go up. If we say, on the other hand, we want the property to be developed, that's a different issue. So if you want to decrease the, the office, obviously you can, but the question is what do you relate that to and what is your, what is your opinion as to the sustainability of that?
I don't want to decrease the office. It's the commercial that I'm looking at.
Oh, okay.
And, and that being said, if we decrease it further, we could have more open space.
Well, if we, if we did that for the whole thing, we could have the whole thing open space. The question is whether you can build something that you will develop or whether it will not develop. There's no problem getting more open space. You just make it so that it can't be developed.
That's not my goal. We've had significant public testimony from the community.
Commissioner Hanson?
We don't, we haven't done any scientific study of this, but we had testimony at our last hearing when we were talking about residential, you know, about the, I think someone from the public suggested reducing it to 225,000 square feet with the, you know, related description that that's three times the size of the shopping center where Trader Joe's is, which is quite a bit of shopping space. So I, I, I thought that was, it, it stuck in my head as a, as a interesting benchmark, you know, even though we may not have any scientific marketing studies to support whether that's the right number or not. But I, I also, given the fact that, that we desire, you know, some more open space and also that, that, traditional retailers are struggling so much and we don't want to have tons and tons and tons of restaurants dominating the north 40, I, I don't see a big problem with reducing the number, at least some.
Commissioner Badami?
We've also had several letters about putting in a community garden. So that could be square footage that could be taken away from commercial and allow for a commercial garden.
A commercial garden?
Sorry, not a commercial garden. You got me all worked up over here. Chair O'Donnell, I would say a community garden.
Okay. Does anybody else want anything else in the shopping center? So we want more open space. We want a community garden. Somebody wrote a letter and said a community pool would be a good idea. Want a community pool?
I would say that would be a huge liability problem for the town.
Okay. So at the moment, we want more open space and a community garden. Do you have some size in mind?
If we could open public testimony again, I'm sure we could get plenty of comments on that. I don't personally have a size in mind.
And I would just offer that we're going to talk about open space in a later topic area. Here, I think the question is whether or not the, from Commissioner Badami, is whether or not the 350,000 square feet should be reduced. And so, you know, that's, I believe that's what the question is and I understand.
Yeah, and if the majority of the commissioner thinks that's the case, we should just say so.
Well, I say so.
Okay. Yes?
So if I'm, if I'm reading the numbers right, 501 is the maximum. That includes commercial, hotel and office. So if you give priority, let's say, because the town really wants a hotel and you want to make that as a maximum sort of affair, that's in the neighborhood of 250,000 square feet to get a good, a good full service property installed. That leaves 251 square feet, which would be the maximum available for office or retail, right?
Correct.
So that, if you, if you prioritize around the hotel and incentivize around getting the hotel, it's going to naturally depress what you're going to get on, on commercial either way. So I'm not sure, personally, I, I think, I think absolutely I'm in favor of reducing the amount of retail. But if the council looks at the applications and incentivizes the applications the way I think we're all suggesting, it's going to naturally depress that. So I'm not sure we need to change the numbers per se, but if we stick with the 501, we're going to have a natural cap.
Other comments? Commissioner Hudes?
Yeah, I think the, these numbers all kind of play together. So I think that, you know, you've got the sort of this 650 total possible and you've got the 501, which is the maximum. And so if you start to make changes elsewhere, so we've increased the hotel office by 50,000 square feet, I think it makes sense to decrease that, because I think there was some thought about those totals as compared to the maximums in terms of flexibility. And those were suggestions that came from a number of the consultants who worked on the project as well. So, you know, to that end, I would say that if we're, if we're really looking to encourage 300,000 total, we're looking to encourage the possibility of a 250,000 square foot hotel, then I think we should consider reducing that 350 to perhaps 300 or some, some number lower than 350, just to have the number sort of hang together.
That number, would you remind me, applicable to what? What specifically?
To the table that says, "Commercial excluding office hotel" that is currently 400, reduce to 350. And there have been several suggestions from other commissioners to reduce it further. And I am in support of that and the concept of how these numbers all kind of play together. And that if we're increasing hotel, that we ought to consider decreasing commercial.
So if, for example, the planning commission were of that mind, might be adequate to say to reduce that. And we've talked about the possibility of 50,000, but nobody is saying exactly what it should be, but the idea being to reduce it. Is that correct?
That's correct, if not even further.
Well, that's what I mean. Ultimately, they'd have to make that decision, unless you want to make a stronger recommendation. So I'm really asking you, the way I hear it now from what Commissioner Hudes said was he thinks there should be a reduction, but he's not picking an exact number. 50,000 was the number that was acceptable to him, at least as I understood what he said, but he's not saying it must be 50,000. Am I understanding you correctly, Commissioner Hudes?
Yeah, that's correct. I think it, it, it should be reduced at least 50,000, perhaps more. I don't know that we have testimony to rely on from, from experts with regard to what that number should be. Perhaps that's an area that would require a little more work before it goes to council, but I would, I would be comfortable with at least a 50,000 reduction.
Okay, Commissioner Badami?
Perhaps we could provide a range to council and they could review it and make a decision. Commissioner Hanson had brought up the 225,000, which I recall public testimony on that. So perhaps we could word our recommendation to be somewhere within the range of 225,000 to 300,000.
How does that go over with the rest of the commissioners? It looks like that would be acceptable, if I read head nods correctly. So can we, can we move on then from that point? Yes, Commissioner Hudes?
Yeah, I wanted to backtrack to a previous point. Commissioner Janoff recommended putting sort of a tolerance around these numbers that were in red and I wanted to express strong support for that. I think that, that the word shall is important, but I think it shall with a range. And I would suggest just doing the math and taking, you know, 15% of the, of the total number and then adding plus or minus 10% to whatever that number is.
Is that acceptable? Also looks like that would be acceptable. Okay, I'm going to try to move on and I may have the wrong number, so you'll have to let me know if I'm moving to the wrong number. I think we've now, implicit in that is 2.5.1 maximum development capacity. And I think six, which is addressed to commercial needs that have been previously identified. I don't know that we specifically have discussed that unless, unless that was your intention. So do you feel we've covered six?
No, we haven't covered six. We've covered six.
Okay, pardon me?
We haven't covered six.
I heard you, but it's, I didn't hear anybody else. Is there some feeling? Before we get into six, I mean, that's the question. Have we implicitly done six or is it ready to be discussed now?
We've already discussed it.
Okay, so let's discuss six, which is addressed to commercial needs that have been previously identified, general merchandise, building materials and residence serving businesses defined as serving the north part of Los Gatos and the north 40. Now, Commissioner Hudes, did you have your hand raised on that?
Yes. So I think it is a separate point. It has to do with the type of businesses that go into whatever the numbers are. And this is meant to clarify, I think, the intention of the original vision and the, the original principles in the vision by being more specific and using a little bit more clear language, saying that the commercial development should be primarily neighborhood serving. So that the planning commission and the council have a yardstick to look at the development and to not necessarily, you know, in, in opposition to being primarily neighborhood serving, would be a regional shopping center, for instance. And so this would give the council and planning commission the ability to look at the type of, the type of businesses that are coming in. And in keeping with the original intention was for these businesses to be primarily neighborhood serving.
Let me ask you this. When you look at six and then you turn the page and you look at the sub paragraphs, that's exactly what they do. And so in those, they say primarily neighborhood serving, primarily, shall be primarily, and primarily. So that's the next four paragraphs.
Right. I thought that was just the implementation of six.
So I'm just saying, is there more that we should add to that?
No, actually, no. I'm just providing some rationale for why I think that's, should be done that way and why it isn't covered by just playing with the numbers.
Okay. Other comments on that? Commissioner Hanson?
I just wanted to concur with what Commissioner Hudes said, that, that when we discussed it in the general plan committee, it was, because right now it's fairly general about complementing what's, you know, and unmet needs in town. And, and we wanted to be sure that, that, to give more guidance that what we're looking for in proposals for new commercial was to serve the residents in the surrounding areas as well as in the north 40, but not, you know, not to bring in things that to attract people from all over the place. There will be, there's places for that in the north 40, but the predominance should be to serve the people that are in the north 40.
Okay, Vice Chair?
I totally agree with that. I really do want to move along, but I, I think we, I would leave it up to staff to use its superior views on these things and add for council's benefit, some kind of specific reference. I've read this and I think somewhere I saw it said, "Don't have a shoe store," which might compete with downtown, meaning it wasn't primarily neighborhood. So I would just ask you to consider, when you write this up for council, what is meant by primarily neighborhood servings, like a local, small restaurant or a, or I don't know what. I understand the intent, but I'd like to give them some, some general, if not specific, guidance. For all four paragraphs.
Okay, when you look at 266, because that first paragraph there also uses the term primarily. So I'm asking you, is there anything in, starting with 266 and going to 7, 8, 9 that you think needs some more discussion? If not, no, we can move on to open space, which is on page 13. And you, you can see the comments there. So we've got perimeter overlay zone. We've got more open space should be required. We've got open space standards and so on. So I think we can talk about open space fairly generally and then zero in on the specific paragraphs. So who would like to comment? Commissioner Hanson?
I think one of the central issues that I remember hearing about, and we heard some additional testimony at our last hearing, was about what counts as open space. And Commissioner Hudes, I think it was you that brought us this definition that's on page 15. So I, I want to maybe start with that, because I think we heard lots and lots of comments. I, I know a lot of care was taken in their original specific plan to have the 30% and then, and then the 20% minimum green space. And, and that it's way more than we would normally get in any other type of proposal. But, but in terms of just being clear, I mean, I think, I, I like the definition that we got shown from the EPA in New England about green space being, you know, it says, "Land that is completely covered with grass, trees, shrubs or other vegetation. It includes parks, community gardens and cemeteries, schoolyards, playgrounds, public seeing areas, public plazas and vacant lots." And, and that, that's what they define as, as open space. And we had more than that in our definition, so.
Commissioner Badami?
So I applaud the clarification to define open space to mean green space. So I'm in favor of the open space changes.
Other comments?
Completely agree.
Commissioner Hudes?
Yeah, I, I raised a suggestion because I think it's important for the deciding bodies to be able to look at the applications and say, is this really open space or is this just, you know, a, a strip of grass in a parking lot? And to, and I think that having some language in the plan is important, to be able to provide that type of yardstick so that we can come back and look at, you know, is this really something that meets sort of general standards on what, what is open space? So I'm supportive of this language, obviously.
All right. It sounds, I've heard no dissenting voices. So can we move on then to parking? Page 16. Yes?
I just wanted to maybe take the opportunity to think about the possibility of community garden while we're talking about open space. And I did want to react that there were a number of suggestions during the hearings last summer. And then there were, I don't know the number, I didn't count, but there were a number of emails. It wasn't just a singular email. And it does seem to be something that the community would like to see as, somewhere in the, in the zone. And so it seemed to me that maybe one way to do that would be to either specify or encourage some of the open space to be used for community garden. And there's a range of ways of doing that, so I just wanted to throw that out there for discussion.
If I recall correctly, the idea of keeping the history of the site was also include some vineyard type land around, I guess it was the Red Barn or something. How do you feel about, well, that's, I guess, fairly How do you feel about, well, that's, I guess, fairly clearly open space. I don't know how it ties, or if it does, in the community gardens.
Yeah, I don't think that was in the specific plan. I think that was in the application. It was an idea to have a vineyard there, which is one type, but I actually think that many seniors are interested in having a place to go and plant vegetables and things like that.
Yeah, I wasn't suggesting that the vineyard would be a community garden. I'm just wondering if perhaps instead of being a vineyard, it could be a community garden.
Yeah, and I think maybe this might be an area where we would put some language to encourage that, and maybe there's some ways to incentivize it. I don't know, but it seems like a great idea, and it would be interesting to see how other municipalities have incentivized the creation of community gardens in spaces that are accessible to people.
Yes, Commissioner Badami?
So I just, I have a question probably for staff. So if there's any associated cost factors with maintaining it, who would bear that?
Well, it depends on how it's set up. So it could be a function that is open to the public community garden, and then the HOA would ultimately maintain it that surrounds it, whether that's commercial or residential. But there are a number of different options there. It could also be that someone coming forward asks the town to maintain that portion, because it will specifically be open to the public. It'll depend on the use, and so we'd have to look at that at the time of application.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, Commissioner Hudes?
Just a question for staff. Has there been discussion about community gardens, a community garden across elsewhere in town? Has this ever come up?
Community gardens come up often. Generally, though, you know, we don't have the space, we don't have the staff resources to maintain. One, there are some communities that have them, that the actual city or town does keep up the maintenance of those and manages them. But for this one, I think it's pretty clear that there's interest for community gardens. We can let the council know that that was part of the recommendation of council and probably provide some language for them as a starting point that could be included in the specific plan.
Okay, that makes sense to me.
Okay, if there are no other comments, we can move on, and if I'm reading this, oh, we were going to talk about parking. So that's page 16, yeah. So what comments do we have on parking? There was one red underlining, and that was E., which was underground parking is encouraged. Are there any other comments? If there are not, I will move on to height. Oh, pardon me, Commissioner Janoff?
I'm just thinking, reading my notes. I think I recall in some of the prior meetings that there was a comment that underground parking is an added cost factor that may not be attractive to a developer. So to that point, I agree with the addition of the item E., underground parking is encouraged, but would also encourage some incentivization so that we actually get that maybe. I think one of the comments was to incentivize underground parking and relax the height or add height, or, you know, do something to trade that off so that for the added cost, the developer has a benefit that's also beneficial for the development.
Okay, I suggest then that maybe when we come to height, which is the next issue, you keep that in mind and see where it might fit in. Okay, so as I said, the next issue is height, and there are a number of sections there, so I think we can talk about them all right now, but tell me, I know you have to look at it to remind yourself, but as soon as someone's ready to make any comments. Vice Chair Kane?
Well, the title of the section is increase height to 45 feet as long as there's more open space. That sounds like a negotiation, and to the extent that former Commissioner Erickson had the first shot at this, I agree with him. If I understood him, I don't think that's applicable. If we need a structure to be more than 45 feet, like the hotel, I don't know why we should put a condition on it. I'm open to listen, but I don't know why we would do that.
Well, just recap one thing. Commissioner Janoff, I think, just said as an encouragement to underground parking, perhaps an increase in height would incentivize it, I think, as she said. So are you rejecting that?
Yeah, with the exception of the hotel. I don't know why we'd go above our standards on height, and that's been a strong complaint from the community, and it remains an issue for me. I wouldn't negotiate a taller building unless it was the hotel.
Commissioner Hanson?
On this point too, I could be wrong, but I thought we talked about this in the general plan committee, and we decided not to tie open space to the height. That's what I remember, but, you know, I could be mistaken. I mean, in any point, I wasn't in favor of this, and I didn't think our consensus was that, but, you know, we talked about so many things, maybe it just got lost. But what I did want to say about the height, though, is, to put some context around it, when the height restriction was made at 35 feet, it actually eliminated some possible housing types that could accomplish dealing with some of the unmet needs. And for instance, senior step-down housing, that was one of the places where it was flagged that, you know, a 35-foot height limit, you know, wouldn't make it possible to have that kind of housing type. So we, that was the whole reason that we had this discussion about doing this and how, and then it was kind of like, well, how could we, you know, hope that it happened? But, because we certainly don't want to have everything in the whole property be 45 feet, so, you know, I thought it was going to be tied to certain kinds of properties, landuses that we desired that required that. You know, maybe instead we should just have a list of what those are, and it might be included, a hotel, I don't know if a hotel needs 45 feet. So, I mean, I would just prefer to do that than to have incentives tied into it in the specific plan.
So let me also say, since the red addition, I think what I'm hearing is you do not agree with the red addition on paragraph 252.
I do not.
Okay, and I think I've heard others say they didn't agree with it either, but Commissioner Hudes?
Yeah, and I think, I can't remember where the general plan committee ended up on this issue. I personally was not in favor of that, so I'm not in agreement with three. But there was another point that did come up that I think is important, it was raised earlier, and going back to community input, if you remember the backdrop on this whole zoning was a lot of community concern about very tall buildings. We just had, you know, lawsuits over, you know, various other developments due to building heights. And so one of the arguments that was made that was persuasive on the part of the developers and the consultants was that the property naturally slopes away from Los Gatos Boulevard, so that it would be possible to allow taller buildings in setback areas. Now, that only works if there's clear language that you measure from existing grade rather than finished grade. And so I think that we should really look at how to do that, and also to say that the required height that's in excess of district maximums only occur in areas that have an equivalent amount of slope reduction from Los Gatos Boulevard and Lark. And that kind of puts some words behind the intention and allows us to have taller buildings not have such an impact by being set back into the center of the development rather than being on the edge of the development. So I would suggest adding some of that language to the height section, and I think it's an important concept. Now, I also remember that it was either a, I can't remember the right word, a concession or an exception that was asked for by the developer in the, you know, as part of the density and other things, was to measure from finished grade rather than existing grade. So I would like to see if there's a way that we can try to make that a little bit tighter language in here, so that we really are ultimately measuring from existing grade rather than finished grade. I think it's important, given the nature of that particular area in town.
So the way the specific plan currently reads, we measure from existing grade or finished grade, whichever grade is lower. And so currently, it's potentially even more restrictive. We can tighten this language up. It would not solve your concern with the concession that was requested as part of a density bonus.
But, okay, so, but there's also maybe another suggestion to add language that says that height in excess of district maximums only occurs in areas that have an equivalent amount of slope reduction from Los Gatos Boulevard and Lark. So that's a little bit different concept.
Yeah, similar concept that in the original go around with the specific plan, so we can definitely carry that forward.
Okay, it is now almost nine. Let's take a 10-minute recess. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to resume. We're now still under building height, or we're under building height. So, building height is page 17, and, okay, so that's just the one page there with the various sub-paragraphs. People have comments on height? Commissioner Hansen?
Well, I think we talked a lot about the 45 feet. The other thing that's right after this is the, is the discussion that we also had about the Lark District in particular. And then there was some sentiment about, about ideally, because so many people were up in hours about seeing 35-foot tall buildings for residential, that we ought to consider limiting the height in the Lark District to 25 feet. Now, the only issue that might come with that is the, is the requirements for the housing element and the density of, you know, 20 dwelling units per acre over 13 and a half acres. So I don't know if we know the answer to that, but I, I think, what I recall, and maybe Commissioner Hughes could correct me if I'm wrong, I thought that people in general or in the General Plan Committee were in favor of if it was feasible to still meet our density requirements to reduce the height in the Lark District, just to make a smoother transition from the residential neighborhoods across the street, and if we could do that, we should. And that's kind of the opposite of this 45-foot thing, but I mean, that's where I, I think you gotta, if we do the 45-foot thing, it needs to be this type and this type, say, affordable housing, senior housing, or whatever, or hotel, and it needs to be in these districts. So that was kind of what I remember about the discussion about height, just those two things, lower height in the, in the Lark District, and then specific places where it could be 45 feet.
Commissioner Hughes?
Yeah, I do recall that conversation, that that, that was really the intent of the discussion in the General Plan Committee, that we should look at reducing the height of residential to 25 feet where possible. In fact, there was some earlier suggestion when we were discussing this in mid-December at the Planning Commission of having a lower density in a small area, which is called the perimeter area. And so I think that's consistent with what we discussed, and I'm supportive of this statement on two.
Yes. Commissioner Janoff?
Question, is, is the reduction to 25 feet just for the Lark District, or is it across all three?
As I recall, it was in the Lark District because in, there are other residential structures elsewhere, particularly over the Market Hall, that are considerably taller than 25, if I remember.
So I would, I would support the reduction to 25 feet in the Lark District, but overall, allow for a higher height, higher density in the other districts. This, this doesn't say specifically Lark, so.
You're equating density there to height. So, but you mean to say just height? You don't mean density, do you? In other words, density would be how many units per acre, as opposed to how many units per building or something? I mean, height and density are not the same.
So, what I'm saying is, I'm supportive of the 25-foot height restriction in the Lark District, and if the height for residential units needs to be higher in the other districts.
Yes.
That's fine.
Fine. Anybody else have comments? Okay. Vice Chair Kane?
It's been said, just to say it again, item three, an increased height of 45 feet provided additional open space is not something myself, maybe some others are in supportive. I wouldn't negotiate that. You know, again, I want to provide a reasonable exemption for the hotel without encumbering the hotel by having to find a way to increase open space.
My understanding is that the red-marked triple I really was not what my fellow commissioners wanted, is that correct? So, I recommend, the recommendation then would not to do that, not be to do that.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of that.
I, I think the recommendation was to allow, allow an increase in height from 35 feet to 45 feet for specific reasons. I, you know, I, I wouldn't be able to make a whole list, but I, you know, like I said, I named a couple that I, we, we found out in the application we got for the affordable housing. You know, there might be a need for it when there's residential or retail in the Northern District. There, we, we heard there was a need for this for senior step-down housing. There would be specific reasons why we would allow 45 feet, and only those reasons, and it would only be in the transition and/or Northern District.
And I think that, and my recollection was that included, possibly included the hotel?
And the hotel, of course, yeah. Like I said, my list wasn't comprehensive, but I, I think it should be, you know, specific types of uses where we would allow 45 feet, that we, that we're desiring to have happen. And that is sort of an incentive of itself to try and encourage those things to happen.
Okay, so that appears to me, I didn't mean to cut anybody off if you had some more comments. I'm just looking at reduce the height of residential. I think you've said that the 25 feet would be the limit on the first Lark, and then we had a discussion of the next two, which I'm not going to try to repeat, but I think we all know what that was. Okay, so now, if, if you're finished with your comments, then we can move on to general other. And we had a long list of shalls and shoulds, which I would hope we don't have to go over specifically, but since you had them and you looked at them, if there are some that you recall that you don't agree with, or if there are some you think should be added, that might be a way to do it more quickly. Yes, Commissioner Hughes?
So first, I had a question for staff, and that is, you know, the question about how the word should or shall is used by the deciding bodies. So, shoulds, if you have a number of items in an application that don't meet the, you know, that are, that are not consistent with the statement in a should, is that grounds, is that objective standards for rejecting an application? The word should.
If you're specifically talking about objective standards, I would say no. But it depends on what that should is tied to. It may be tied to a specific requirement, so I think that could vary.
I might also say, and the town attorney I think would agree with me on that, for purposes of law, shall is mandatory, and that's why people like, like shall, and should is permissive, but as was just said, some things seem to, that might otherwise seem to be permissive, can in the context be not permissive. But with word shall versus should, it's a lot easier if you use shall when you mean shall. And I think that was the point of the comment on should versus shall, but I just want to make sure we've got it all. And then we also had a comment, there are some other words in here that perhaps should be mandatory or not, and you can't tell, and I will not try to restate those, nor have I gone over those, because we just heard it this evening, but it might be something staff would want to look at. We're trying to get rid of ambiguity, so if we really meant shall when we say should, that should be corrected. If we really meant should, then we should leave it alone.
Yeah, that's, if I might, that's my understanding, and I, you know, was, you know, very disappointed to learn that we were not able to use the vision and principles as a, as a yardstick of an objective standard for evaluating an application. And so I think it's important that we look at the, the shoulds and promote some of them to shalls. I made the suggestion at the General Plan Committee that we use the vision and guiding principles as the yardstick for things, and that's sort of what I've done, is I've, I've looked at them. And so I, you know, and I would encourage staff to continue to do that, there, there, you know, it's, it's great to have them highlighted, but it's also important, I think, to follow through and see, you know, which of these can be converted to objective standards that an application could be evaluated by, by promoting some of the, the shoulds to, to shalls. I can give you my top 10, if you want. I read, I read them all, but.
I would suggest, unless anybody has a problem with that, you submit those to staff, because I don't, I think we all agree with the concept where, where you mean it to be mandatory. If we could use shall, that would make it easier. And so that'd be my suggestion. If, if others would rather do it the, a different way, that's fine. Commissioner Hansen?
I, I didn't want to make it a different way. When I started going through it, I, I kind of started going through one by one, and I, generally speaking, I, my overall feeling was that everything where it said should, should be shall, especially if, if it helped us achieve the objectives that we were intending for the plan. But I did actually have a question about a couple of things where I didn't think that would be the case, and I wondered, like, in the case of the very specific list of improvements to the streets around the North Forty that the first developer should make, I, I wondered, maybe it was because they were in the EIR, so you could help me with that, but I, I wondered if that wouldn't be something that could potentially change, given the changes in traffic patterns, you know, to, that the shalls might be something different than what it's on this page, we might need to add to it, or, or make it different than what it says on the page, if that makes sense. That was the one place where it said very specific things about, you know, this street needs to have this many lanes and yada, 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 and I, and although I, I think that's a great idea to be as specific as possible, I, I've wondered if, you know, that there might be changes that would make it, you know, you needed to do more than that or do it differently.
Well, I would say that if I remember correctly, and we will double-check this before going to council, obviously, is that all of those are specifically pulled out of the environmental impact report. So they are shall, they, they, changing those to shall would not be a problem, as well as the intent, which is in the EIR, of the first developer doing that list of improvements.
Okay, so those were from the EIR? Okay, I, I thought that might be the case, thanks.
Vice Chair Kane?
Just a clarification, is your subject in Exhibit A, or is it elsewhere?
Exhibit A.
Yes.
Yeah.
Where?
Section 4.
It's in, it's in chapter four, so you flip through until you get to the fours. And then she's talking about 4.6, I believe, which is the intersection improvements.
Yeah.
Got it, thank you. One question, I guess, I had was if you say look and feel, and you say the project shall have look and feel, that, that's fine, because I think that is the intent. I don't think, however, it deals with what does it mean for look and feel. So you may have a feeling that you've accomplished something, but I'm not sure you have unless people know what look and feel means, which is rather difficult. Yes?
Yeah, so in, in my experience, shall is, you're going to do it, that's the legal thing, and so we should be careful about blanket shelling. I would say that if you've got documents that, that already provide for the shall, make sure that those are consistent. If you've got instances of should where it's an inherently subjective topic, it'd be difficult to enforce a shall. As an example, on page, the first page, under types of open space, the should that's highlighted in the last paragraph on the page, they should be well-designed. I don't know how you would change that to shall be well-designed, because well-designed is a subjective kind of attribute. So if you're prepared to back up a shall be well-designed with examples of what that shall, shall be, then I think that's okay. But if, if you've got something that's inherently kind of soft, I, I don't think it's worth going to a shall.
Comments? Commissioner Hughes?
Yeah, so I just wanted to voice my support for Ms. Cantana's suggestion that other language be looked at in a similar way. Obviously, we don't have time to do that tonight, but perhaps the most efficient way is to do that in an explanation in terms of a vocabulary, whether it's in the front or the back of the document, that explains it, rather than, you know, rewriting the document or reorganizing it completely. But I think that, that would, is an excellent suggestion, and I would be supportive of taking another look at the document with regard to other language that may be unclear and maybe clarifying whether a term is mandatory or a suggestion.
Other comments? That being the case, we seem to have taken care of shoulds. And also, I think, two, and I don't, does anyone have any comments on the balance of paragraph two at page 18? And that would now include paragraph four on page 19. The addition, I'll be right back to that then. The addition at 19-4 is, existing native trees shall be preserved where feasible. Is there a comment on that?
I actually have a comment on two, I think it's.
I was going to go back.
Oh, okay, because I have a whole.
It's pointed out to me I should go back in any event, but since I was there, I just thought we could at least do one of those. So does anybody have a comment on four, and then I'll go back? If not, let's go back then. And I think, I know Vice Chair Kane has something, but I think Commissioner Hughes' comment is before, just chronologically before.
So, you know, this was, this was a key part of the area that came to light as the application was being evaluated by the Planning Commission and subsequently by the council in terms of, you know, understanding that the guiding principles that were very important to the council and the community are, are followed through in the document itself. And so I had three areas where I had some examples of ways that we could make the language more objective as a starting point. So in terms of look and feel of Los Gatos was one of the areas that was, that was challenged by attorneys and others, and so I was going to suggest a couple of things there. One is to amplify the document with examples illustrating architectural styles, naming them, and using them as a, as a resource by which an application could be evaluated, and also defining what is good and what is not good, you know, as we've done with some of the Hillside Guidelines in terms of things that would be examples of look and feel of Los Gatos and things that would not be, so that the deciding bodies have some more tools to make objective evaluation in look and feel. And then also particularly maybe adding some language that says something like, "The architectural types, style, pattern, and layout shall be commonly found within other Los Gatos neighborhoods of similar use, whether residential, commercial, or otherwise." Again, some, some language that could be used as a yardstick for look and feel.
Any further comments on that? All right, Commissioner, Vice Chair Kane, you had some comments on some part of this.
On four, excuse me, on four, existing native trees should be preserved where feasible. I think the intent is clear, the words are wishy-washy, where feasible, you know, wherever possible, but the intent is there, and respect should be paid to the trees. I don't suppose you could use a shall in that instance, but it carries the same meaning, shall be preserved where possible.
Well, if you leave where, where feasible there, shall works as well as should. I mean, the key there is where feasible.
All right. And going back to what Commissioner Hughes was just saying, we've discussed before putting together a package of houses, and we had a submission from, maybe it was Mr. Pacheco or someone else, who gave us a, no, it was a gentleman who spoke before the mic. That's Lenny. It wasn't Mr. Pacheco, it was someone else who had a catalog of pictures that he had taken. taken, and we said, maybe we should include these, but that, those, I've lost my stack of whatever pictures those were. And there was some concern about the legitimacy of being selective, and it occurred to me that Commissioner Janoff, Commissioner O'Donnell, and I, and others, have for years used the field guide to American houses when we get to Historic Preservation Committee. Now, that seems to be very legitimate activity. It's a scholarly document. We could undertake to put something together like that, identifying that different neighborhoods are different neighborhoods, and we could do it chapter by chapter, much as this book does. But it's a well-worn book, we've used it for years, it's a legitimate guide. Ms. Janoff is an expert in this area, in fact. Be a good candidate to put that book together for us, just off the top of my head. Thank you.
Let me just say, one of the problems that worries me is when we talk about a project and we try to find something in town to compare it to. And if you look at this project, the size of it, and you try to find something to compare it to, you get things like Netflix, and I think that's probably not the intention. If you go to a residential neighborhood, I don't think that's similar at all, no matter what it looked like. So the only problem I have with attaching photos is that, good luck, I'm not sure what the photos are going to show when you talk about a project of this size and this mixture. If you put in commercial buildings, which, let's say, are 35 feet high and whatever, where are we going to go in town to get something we think is the look and feel of one of our warehouses? If people can do that, got more power to them. Now, I think Commissioner Janoff looked like she was, did I misunderstand your hand?
Yes.
Okay. So I've got Commissioner Badami.
So I think we talked before about Len Pacheco's letter that's contained in Exhibit 10, and he talks about clarifying the look and feel of the town. And he talks about, "Architecture and site design should reflect the rural past, its natural scheme, and capture the aggregarian feel of the property. Consider a rural yet contemporary plan tuned to the site, rural yet of today." I like that for a look and feel. If that could be incorporated into the look and feel for comments for the council to consider, or if staff could somehow work with that, I think it kind of captures it.
We will definitely be forwarding Mr. Pacheco's comments as it moves forward. I think with anything with architectural style, I think Commissioner Hudes was speaking about, you know, getting more to more traditional architectures. Now, that obviously is limiting, and architecture does change over time, so I think we just need to be careful. But I think the suggestions are understood, and we will carry those forward.
Again, just, I would say this, we had this project last night, and the idea of the look and feel of Los Gatos, we haven't approved that, but that was then compared to our library, the look and feel. Well, the look and feel of our library has nothing to do, as far as I can tell, with Los Gatos. I'm not criticizing it, but I can't find that it has the look and feel of Los Gatos. It's just a very functional and perhaps nice-looking library. If this ultimately gets approved, it won't be because I can run around town and find something like that. So I just point that out. Hopefully, we can have some more certainty in a very uncertain area, but I am somewhat doubtful. I saw some other hands. Commissioner Hudes?
Yeah, I understand the challenge. We faced that one last night. However, I think the way the North Forty specific plan is currently drafted, it really doesn't give you very much at all to go back to. So I am in favor of Commissioner Badami's suggestion. I would actually promote Mr. Pacheco's comments to be part of the document as compared to a comment. I think they are value, actually, I think I, we mentioned that in the General Plan Committee, but somehow it was late, and we probably didn't actually follow through on that, but I'm very much in favor of those, those comments. I think those coupled with examples, as Commissioner Kane pointed out, as well as a statement that allows you to kind of have something to hang your hat on, where, you know, you say that something, the architectural style, pattern, layout shall be commonly found within other Los Gatos neighborhoods, so that if you see something and it's not there at all anywhere in town, you can say no.
So if a warehouse is being built there, where do you go to find a good-looking warehouse?
Well, if, if it is of similar use. If you don't have similar use, then you can't use that. That's why I had the word similar use in that statement.
Oh, we have warehouses in town, but I'm just saying, if you, if you show us five warehouses in town, is that then the look and feel of Los Gatos?
Well, for a warehouse.
Okay, so that's the look and feel. We'll find five warehouses, and we'll say this is the look and feel of Los Gatos.
Well, it's, it's some kind of a starting point for a discussion about whether something meets something that was very important to, to this document, and that is the vision and the principles that the council came up with, and was severely challenged, saying that those were not objective. And so I think it's important that we have some language in the document that allows you to have that discussion and to, to, again, make a judgment based on facts and law that allows you to reject something if it is totally out of character with the look and feel.
Okay, Commissioner Janoff?
Yeah, I think, I think not just for this specific plan, but very often we get designs that come before us, that need to reflect Los Gatos. And Los Gatos means a lot of different things to a lot of different people. So I agree that attaching the full list of Mr. Pacheco's recommendations on how to further refine, especially that, that first bullet, not just the North Forty, but generally speaking, we've got that look and feel of Los Gatos here. So I think this helps. The design guidelines do a very good job of providing examples of do this, not that. It doesn't seem like a very big stretch to be able to attach some additional examples that would further elaborate on the North Forty type of development objectives. So I would support attaching this list. I would support attaching it to the specific plan, as well as to more, more generally for, for us to be able to use in the planning commission work, and provide a handful of visual examples. I would say that the look and feel of Los Gatos is, no disrespect intended to anybody who's really interested in warehouses. I suspect the interest is more of the residential and commercial facility, so I think that's where I'd go.
Commissioner Hanson?
I'm going back to when we were hearing the, the specific plan proposal that we got. And I, I'm going to echo Commissioner Hudes' comments that, you know, we, you know, we had to look hard in the document to figure out, you know, the things that we felt that we could justify that were objective standards, and, and more examples always helps that. And I, and one of the things I remember, I'm mixing look and feel a little bit with density, but, but one of the things that we had to wrestle with was, right now, there's, what is it, 70 or 80 percent single-family homes, and there's no single-family homes specified in the North Forty. And so, you know, you're automatically in this place. So we did end up coming up with, I think staff gave us five examples of, of properties in Los Gatos where there was actually 20 dwelling units per acre, and, and what the sizes of those were, because we were discussing, you know, the density and everything. So I don't, I don't think it would be a stretch to do that, and maybe Commissioner Hudes' language that would say that you could find it in some other neighborhood. I mean, because I think it, there's always going to be some examples that we can at least compare it to, and there's so many different, much variety, that might cover the look and feel.
Yes.
One last suggestion for staff. As this change in language begins to evolve or solidify around what we are hoping to be more objective criteria, it might be a good idea to invite some architects and developers who would pro bono, take a look at the revisions and say, yeah, that, that brings it into a more objective realm, or, yeah, I can still wiggle around this if I wanted. You know, just get an outside opinion as to whether the changes are going in the direction that we are intending.
Commissioner Badami?
Could that mean Larry Cannon? Our town architect? Is, are you familiar?
I wouldn't say just one individual. Certainly someone from the town with town's interests, but we've got a lot of very capable developers and architects in town who could weigh in, you know, a complimentary session with donuts and coffee and comments or something, yeah.
And I think, I mean, these are good comments. I think not being an architect, I would say, architecture is inherently objective or subjective. So I don't know how you're going to get to that point, frankly. We can go around and take photos of more multifamily buildings in town, but then we have to have a consensus or a number of the planning commissioner councils say, yes, that is a look and feel, or no, go take some more pictures of something else, because even though it's in town, that's not the look and feel of town. So we will definitely, I mean, this is obviously a big topic, but I think it's, architecture in and of itself is subjective.
Well, if you look at the higher-density developments in Los Gatos, I mean, I think about some we've had, the Sobrato development that got the bonus points, very high density. It, it, it ever occurred to me that was the look and feel of Los Gatos, but it certainly is a very major complex in Los Gatos, and you couldn't very well leave it off. So if you look at the various illustrations of look and feel of Los Gatos, when you look at substantial developments of residential, i.e. high-density, it's going to be interesting if you can find a pattern.
I would say it's going to be difficult to get enough examples. We are an eclectic town, so I'm not so sure I'm in favor of attaching samples, because I think it may be limiting. But I think Mr. Pacheco's letter covered a range pretty well without providing examples.
Yeah, I will mention that the Historic Preservation Committee, which the three of us either are on or were on, does rely on this book. You'll find that every picture in this book is a home, and that is a lot easier to deal with than what we're dealing with. And I don't know of a book, which only means my knowledge is limited, of a comparable thing, partly because the types of buildings we may be talking about are so different. But if, in fact, we can find a look and feel that applies to that, that would be very helpful. Commissioner Hudes?
Yeah, I understand this is a challenging area, and I don't think we need to worry about, you know, warehouses because they're not permitted use in the North Forty, and I'm not even so concerned about the commercial on look and feel. I think the, we heard a lot of input from residents in the town that the, that the application that we saw didn't meet the look and feel, and therefore, we had to look at the zoning, and we had to look at the document, and there was very little in there to hang our hat on. So I think, you know, coupling Mr. Pacheco's statement with the suggestion that I've made about some language, and, you know, potentially using a reference as well, a document that says that these are some of the types, but, you know, give us a little bit more to work with in evaluating look and feel, because it was, it was very important to residents.
Any other comments? Commissioner Hanson?
Well, I didn't have any more comments on look and feel, but I had another one on one of the other guiding principles.
Fine.
Is it, okay, I don't know if we're finished. The one that I, I'm really concerned about is the, the third one, the North Forty will address the town's residential and/or commercial unmet needs. The existing plan has basically, you know, one, I think, a one or two-page exhibit with some very, very generic language about Gen Y and seniors, and I, I didn't feel like it was substantial enough to define it. And so then, you know, we kind of ran into this thing where, okay, if you have senior affordable housing, you have senior housing. Well, that isn't meeting the needs of the seniors that live in Los Gatos, because most of the people that live in Los Gatos aren't in a situation of qualifying for that kind of affordable housing, and what they're looking for instead is some kind of step-down housing. So I, I want, I hoped that we could, and so then, then it becomes a gray area, where like, well, what, you know, what are the unmet needs and what do they want? I, I thought we could just maybe do a little bit better job. We don't really have the resources to go through a detailed survey or anything like that, but we could do a better job than, than the very generic language that we had in, I think it was Exhibit C or wherever, that described that, those populations, and talked a little bit more about Los Gatos. I mean, because we have data in the housing element even that talks about the number of seniors that we're going to have and what we're going to have over a period of time, and, and, you know, we probably have the same of millennials and stuff. So I was hoping we could maybe just have some more specific data about the unmet needs in town for at least residential. And then we, for commercial, we know one is a hotel, and I, I think it says elsewhere in the document that we really want a hotel, but if, if, if we needed to be more specific, we could say that again.
Other comments? Now, I think, yes, Commissioner Hudes?
Yeah, so I think that that would be important to, to do that, as with some of the other things, to give some more ability to evaluate an application based on whether it is meeting or not meeting the needs of, of the town. So I think amplifying that section would be valuable. I also had some comments on hillside views, which was, again, falls under number two, translating the guiding principles into mandatory rather than permissive language, so kind of staying with that same section that, and these are examples from the document itself, but also this was an area where I think we could make this more objective and more clear. So I think that hillside views, we could set some standards for view locations, define prominent hillsides that should be viewable. I think we, you know, hillsides like El Sareno and El Sambroso are very important, and they are, they really kind of define the hillsides that you can see looking south from almost anywhere in town. And so one way to make that more objective would be to put some language such as, "Views of the predominant hillsides, El Sareno and El Sambroso, shall be available from a minimum of 30 percent of the intersections of roadways within any project on the North Forty." I'm, I'm just taking a stab here, but I'm sure staff could do a much better job of identifying viewing platforms, locations, et cetera, ways to evaluate whether, in fact, hillside views are being embraced in a more objective way. I think there was, that was one of the very top issues that residents had after we went, you know, we looked at an application.
Vice Chair Kane?
I remember you discussing that, I think it was the second General Plan Committee meeting that I attended, and that's really persuasive stuff. If staff were to underscore those remarks in the verbatim transcript that we have, he says it very, very well. I didn't know the names of some of those hills, but I knew when they were gone.
Other comments? Yes, Commissioner Hudes?
I have another topic fitting under two, though.
All right.
And that was just a suggestion, maybe some language about intensity. You know, I, the, the term intensity and the term density were used, and one in sort of a legal sense, where you have the number of units per acre, but I think it would be helpful to have some suggestions about how the housing element density that we're legally required to provide can be obtained with less intensity. And so that would be helpful to have some language in the plan. Again, I'm not an expert, but I think that's an area that, that could, could help us in evaluating applications where we have to meet a certain density level, but we could then also look at the intensity in ways that the intensity could be reduced.
Our comments tonight, and maybe I'm wrong, relate to, specifically to the North Forty. So use your comment.
Absolutely, because, you know, I'm, I'm looking at number two, the guiding principles, and making the language mandatory rather than permissive, and that was another area.
Commissioner Badami?
I would just comment that when we reviewed the residential amendments, that we did look at the intensity by reducing the square footage allowances on the residential units. So I felt that it was addressed there, the intensity issue.
And one of the major things that we're supposed to do is have 20 acres of, of having a, pardon, 13.5 acres of a density of 20, which kind of removes, I think, the question of density, because we know we must have that density, at least of, of the 13.5 acres. But I guess the other question would apply to the other acreage.
No, I'm actually talking about that requirement, where maybe some suggestions could be made... No, I'm actually talking about that requirement, where maybe some suggestions could be made in the guidelines about how to achieve that required density with less intensity. There was a great deal of concern about the intensity as well. So maybe clarifying that from the perspective of professionals in, in land use and planning, so that the deciding bodies can see if we are still meeting the legal requirement on density, can that be achieved with less intensity? And I agree with Commissioner Badami that we did address that somewhere, but there wasn't much in the document to say, again, here are some guidelines about how to achieve the required density with perhaps a bit less intensity. And I was suggesting that that might be helpful to the deciding bodies.
Other comments? So I think we've covered the material we have before us. I said earlier in the evening when the question came up of, as to whether or not we could stay within the existing environmental impact report. If anybody wants to raise any questions about that at the moment, they can. If not, we'll just move, well, actually, if not, we're, I think we're complete. Vice Chair?
You're right. Let's just formally agree that we agree with the JPC recommendations on Items Three, Four, Five, Six, and Seven, which are essentially one-liners, just to put that on the record.
Well, we've said it each time, but that's, if that, everybody agrees with that, that's fine with me. Commissioner Badami?
So are we looking for a motion at this point, then? Because I can make one.
I don't know that we need a motion, but I'll look to staff for that.
I think we can just carry forward the comments. If you would like to make a motion, I don't, you know, we definitely won't stop you. But, but it's, but it's one of those things, I think, where we've had a lot of discussion over the last two meetings. And so it's, I think it would be, could be simple, because you could just say, based on our past two meetings, we forward these recommendations to the council.
Well, I have a simple one.
There we go.
We do have Exhibit Two, and this is usually, you know, what we refer to when we make our required findings. So I'll make one. I'll make it official. And that is, I move to forward the planning commission's recommendations and comments to the town council for consideration of amendments to the North Forty specific plan. I can make the required finding for SEQA, and I can make the required consistency with the town's general plan.
Yes, Commissioner Hudes?
I'll second that motion.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor? I think it's unanimous. So, does staff have anything to raise at this point?
We don't have anything to raise. Really appreciate the hard work you guys have put in over the last two meetings. And we will carry this forward, and we'll see where the council lands on, on your recommendations. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. The meeting is adjourned.